Okay, the Commissioners, Brazos County Commissioners will meet in the workshop August 20th, 1:30. Commissioner's courtroom, the county administration building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106.
Speak up, speak up.
Okay.
Keep it on?
It's on. First item is called order and the second is presentation and discussion of the FY 24-25 county budget. And I'll turn it over to you, Nina.
I just want to remind everybody, I know we're making announcements that if you're elected official or department head, they'll like to speak on number three. Please sign in, that way we can make sure we call you up and you're able to speak. We're gonna leave the sign in sheet throughout until we get to number three, so if you change your mind, that's fine. As well as number three is for y'all's discussion unless the court calls you up to speak during the presentation. Other than that, we're gonna hold all discussions till the end for the department heads and elected officials. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Katie Connor, the county auditor, to start with revenue.
Afternoon, I'm gonna try to speak into the mic the entire time, I'm sorry. We're gonna go through revenues first. Part of the goal of this meeting is for you to be able to figure out what tax rates you want to propose next week. My numbers as far as the FY 22 actuals, FY 23 actuals, FY 24 adopted budget and the 25 proposed budget match Nina's. Okay, so this is just more detail on the revenue. Again, this is general fund only at this time. So you may or may not remember last year, there was a proposed tax rate of .4247. And based on that proposed tax rate, we budgeted 109 million for tax revenues. However, that's not the rate that was actually adopted. The rate that was actually adopted would only generate 105,986,866 dollars in revenue. So that's the first adjustment that I need to make sure y'all are clear on. We, Nina, prepared the budget based on using the actual adopted tax rate. So the revenue, the comparisons that you'll see through the rest of this workshop where they say how much we, if we're short, you know, how much we need to balance the budget are based on the current tax rate of 4097 per hundred. Okay? So that's the first thing right up there, the 105, that decreased the revenue budget from what was actually adopted by 3.9 million. The rest of this on column FY 25 proposed budget is the numbers that we've put together for the revenue budget. They are updated as needed, if necessary, by comparing to actuals. Note that the tax increment financing is going up from 1.8 million to 2,45,045,000. That includes the synthetic TERS. Also, the 381 development agreements, oh yeah.
I was gonna get you to explain what a synthetic TERS is, but I think we'll skip that one.
Okay. I've tried to think ahead as best as I can. The 381, we increased by another 50,000 expecting that the few that, that we might have some increases in there because that's the goal. Sales tax, we budgeted more than we're, it looks like than we're gonna actually get in '23, '24, but, and so this budget isn't increased a whole lot, it's only increased by 319,000 for sales tax. Total for taxes is actually a decrease from the current budget of 3.6 million. Make sense? I'm watching Judge's scowl, he gets this line right here.
Yeah, and I mean, and even though there were some positive variances in revenues, that still was predominantly the difference between the proposed and the adopted rate?
Yes, for '23, '24. We're just starting back where we were at instead of making any assumptions. Okay? Charges for service, I did it a little bit differently. I did, a couple of years ago, we started implementing, adding the division to revenues so that we could see, there are several statutes that say certain revenues are to be used only for certain specific purposes. One of those is road and bridge, and it is some sales tax. We'll get back to, let's see, public transportation, is it motor vehicle sales tax, Melissa? Motor vehicle sales tax is only allowed to be used to offset road and bridge expenditures. And so I kinda presented this way so that you could kinda see if anybody asked, how come motor vehicle isn't being applied to road and bridge? Well, it is, but we spend a lot more than that brings in, and so we don't offset it. Charges for service, estimating that the budget is gonna go up from 11.2 million to 13.6 million, an increase of 2.3 million. Interest, I changed, but we budgeted 5.7 million in 2024, estimating 10.2 million in FY 24-25. I went ahead and went with the numbers as they are showing today and used the estimate based on that. We have already had one Fed Reserve decrease in interest, so I don't know what's gonna happen next year, but I'm hoping it'll take at least three calendar quarters to get there if it starts coming down.
Okay, and this is all general fund interest?
Yes.
Okay.
And then other revenues?
We've got some interest in some other places that...
Several of the special revenue funds earn interest, including investment interest, especially the LPPF. But the revenue that we earn off of capital funds, funds over in Fund 45,000, is actually in the general fund. We don't leave it over in that fund.
Gotcha.
Okay. Other revenues, '24 is 961,000, I increased it to 1,086,000, excuse me, that's, yes, other revenues, 1,086,000 for FY 25. Primarily, that's gonna be in your court costs for the justice system and some in law enforcement.
Just curiosity, before we leave the interest as far as that goes, I was gonna ask the treasurer, I hadn't seen, but have we had our pools, have they increased the average days of maturity in the pools with short-term rates declining from over five and a quarter to just about 5%?
I would have to check on that, I do not have an answer for that.
Okay, I'm just kinda curious because, I mean, that, if they're increasing their average days of maturity, they're thinking rates are gonna, short-term rates are gonna continue to trend down.
And from everything I'm hearing, there's about three cuts that they're looking at, two for this year and then one to two next year as well, so it's gonna continue to trend down.
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, that's maybe an insight into what we're gonna be looking at as far as interest. I mean, golly, you can't be happier that we're four and a half million dollars almost in revenue. I was looking at the budget to actuals and it's, it's been great.
It has, it has, and the new RFP with the bank as well, increased those, increased the interest as well.
Super, thanks.
On the third page, we get to reserve fund balance. You'll notice that there are still numbers in the '24, that's what we budgeted for '24. We have not plugged in the huge number, reserve fund balance, yet for 2025. You'll see the 6 million assigned to contingency, we talked about that in the last couple of years. And then also the 5 million for indigent health, where we talked about not taxing that full 8% every year, we're only taxing for those expenditures that are over 5 million. So we're using fund balance to help balance that part. And then...
So that's just a perpetually, we will roll that existing balance forward?
Yes.
To meet the statutory requirement?
Yeah, not exactly, because the statutory is more than 5 million to meet what we generally don't spend.
Okay, so as opposed to fully assessing?
Fully taxing 8% every year, yes.
Okay, this is 5 million, which is...
An 8%, Nina, do you remember how much that was?
Best practice is it's got you covered.
It's about 8.5 million.
Okay.
So, without balancing the general fund yet, we have 11.5 budgeted for reserve fund balance.
Okay.
Okay. Intergovernmental, you'll notice that the SL, SMRF revenue, SLFRF, don't ask me what that stands for, State and Local Federal Recovery Fund, replacement revenue, you'll notice that's zero because we have not recognized any revenue replacement from the ARPA funds since 2002, '22, excuse me. Other intergovernmental revenues usually include monies we receive from the state. For example, for this county court at law judges, we receive $84,000 from the state for their salaries from both of those, those are in here. Other revenues as far as sale of scrap, things like that, I only went up a little bit on that one, from 836,000 to 857. And other financing sources, there's both other financing sources and other financing uses. Brazos County has way more uses, that's where we budget to transfer out to the capital project funds, these are monies coming into the general fund. So we get a $20,000 admin fee from the LPPF, and we're estimating that the sale of capital assets will bring in 190,000 next year.
Okay, yeah, the, refreshing my memory back to the 2022 million dollar transfer from the health endowment, was that?
That was canceling the health endowment. We had a health endowment from the tobacco settlement funds for years and years and years.
Right.
And that was, this transfer was getting, doing away with that fund.
Okay, and that just went to general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
So total, I left it general fund expenditures, should be total general fund revenues before tax rate set or before that is 168 million dollars. Next page is the one you're gonna love. Possible tax rates. Tax assessor collector is here in case I get lost. The no new revenue rate came in this year at, for a total of .35395162, of which .037866 is debt service, can't be changed. The flexibility you have is under the MNO tax rate. On this sheet, we put last year's tax rate up at the top. You'll see the tax year adopted for 2023, the appraised value of 26 billion, MNO tax rate of .368986, the debt service rate of .040714, for the total tax rate of .4097, and there's that 105 million again. And that's what we based this budget on. Below that, the green row is the, well, okay, first, first row is the no new revenue rate based on the appraised value of 28,328,425,403. If we adopted the no new revenue rate, we would realize approximately 2.3 million dollars more in general fund revenue.
That's new property.
Yes, sir. I went ahead and put a note where the .4097 is, I didn't color it, but that's where the FY 24 adopted rate is. If you adopt the same rate as last year, general fund will increase 6,430,234. The green is the voter approval rate with the sales tax adjustment. We've talked often about how sales tax has to be used to offset our property tax. So the VAR with sales tax adjustment would be .412753. And that would bring in 7,277,803, more than what, more than the 105, that's what I'm comparing it to.
Okay, are these the, on the unused increment rates, are these in dollar amounts or adjusted for dollar amounts? Because the legislation changed where it had to be dollar amounts as opposed to...
And then they convert it back to percentages. So it's basically past value at, past value at present, no. It is, it's dollars, and then you have to convert it back based on the new appraised value.
So you've done all that math in here?
It's done in the truth and taxation worksheet, yes.
Gotcha, okay. And how much net debt did we add this year?
Net debt did we add, zero.
Okay, I thought we had some stuff that matured and we had some new stuff that we issued.
That was in 2023. We have not issued any debt for 2024.
Okay, but we didn't have anything that rolled off?
Yes, we did make, well, we actually hadn't made it yet, the principal comes in September.
Our INS rate went from .0407 to .0378. Is that all valuation increase or is some of that a result of our net debt decreasing?
Our net debt decreasing and the valuation increasing.
Okay, so how much did our net debt decrease? Because I know we, we had some stuff that was scheduled that came off and we didn't add any more COs.
I didn't bring 2023's calculation, but...
Voter approval.
One CO will fall off this next year. One, one obligation will fall off this next year.
Yes, we need 10 million, if I remember correctly, 10,700, I'm almost there.
10 million for what?
10, we need 10,545,360 in debt service for FY 24.
Okay, and that will retire, that 10, that will retire 10 million or pay interest plus retire?
Both, it pays the current interest, we pay interest on March 1st and September 1st of each year, and we make most of our principal payments in September.
All right, so our net, our INS tax rate went down from .0407 to .0378 primarily due to value increases?
And retire, we didn't retire any individual issuances, but we did retire some principal.
Right, some of the stuff just matured.
I say we did, it's coming in like a week, we haven't actually paid it yet.
So the net outstanding debt did decrease as well as...
Yes.
Just stuff that fell off the schedule that we're not paying interest on anymore.
FY 24, our debt service was 11,862,997. So our debt, schedule of debt payments went down. And then appraised values went up, so yes, that is what made the tax rate go down.
So the current tax rate actually is on the green line here. So the current tax rate actually is on the green line here.
Green line is voter approval rate, so it's the no new revenue rate.
Oh, I'm sorry, the adopted rate. I'm sorry, the, the one before that where it says fiscal year 24 adopted rate.
Where the total tax rate is .4097, yes.
So the offset there is predominantly a reduction in debt service? Because if debt service went from .4, .0407 to .3786, then our total tax rate, if we keep it at the adopted rate, we've got more money going into general fund revenue and less going into debt service, correct?
Well, I can tell there's a problem with that right there. I was trying to figure out how much it was a penny. Can you, I think the spreadsheet's up if you want to fix it.
What I'm saying is, is if we keep the tax rate the same and our debt service requirement went down, that means that more of that money's going into general fund.
Yes, more, switch to MNO, yes.
So we're just transferring it from INS to MNO?
Yes.
The revenue?
Yes.
At the same tax rate?
Yes. Sorry, I got my numbers locked off. I'm trying to type in numbers and I can't do it right. Do you have the printed one?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of get an idea of what our net debt, total amount of decrease of our outstanding debt did. And, and the reason I'm asking that question is because there is no revenue cap on debt service.
I'll agree with you for now. Hold on.
Yep, there.
Um, for some, number lock.
I think it's, you have to push to activate or something.
Oh, Lord.
Here. Okay, so I did technically-
I'm sorry, Ms. Commissioner Aldrich, if you'll say your question again.
I don't know. Well, I think the question is, if we, if we look at the no new revenue rate-
Which one was it?
36, 36.
Tax budget.
That's only a-
Tax budgets.
Penny per hundred decrease. If we looked at our current, right, okay, so our, our INS rate's going down to where-
We don't have Excel on this computer.
Our actual, our actual MNO tax rate, under the new numbers, would go up from-
You can't, can you?
3686 to 3718. So the transfer will go from debts, what we're not paying in debt service, which is formulaic and calculated as a requirement, that rec, that additional revenue would go over to MNO, correct?
Yes. And I have some debt rate options based on the workshop last week.
Right, okay.
Do you want to go over those?
Um, probably between the two of us as opposed to everybody.
One thing that I do want to make sure that I'm clear on, last workshop, and there was a funding agreement that went through today, we will be issuing debt in 2025, 2025, sorry, for at least 15 million for the George Bush grade separation.
I thought that was interesting, the way that the agenda said is there's no, no required matching funds.
Yeah, that is the required matching funds, yes.
While it is the required matching funds.
It's nomenclature.
Yeah. It's how we make it less confusing, right?
Yeah, we're doing real good with that today.
The government requires us to be, okay.
Yes, but the other thing to consider is I have not received a burn rate for the next two years from ITS.
Correct.
So in 2023, I got the burn rate of about 19 million over two years. So we issued 20 million.
Right.
But that is most, I don't think it's going to be gone by the time we issue debt in 2025, but we will need to be planning ahead. So while we'll issue 15 million for George Bush, we may also need to issue more road bond debt, which will pretty much, if you want to keep the debt service tax rate at four cents, that will, we will not be able to do four cents tax rate and road bond for more than 20 million.
Okay, well, I mean, it, it makes sense if we're gonna go out and issue debt on the cost per dollar of debt that we issue.
Yes, there are combining.
At 50 million, it's a heck of a lot better breakpoint than it is at 15 million or 20 million.
Except that we've been issuing it at 4% versus a potential 3% the next year, or I don't know what interest.
Back, back, back to my question as to what's happening with the average portfolio maturity in the pools.
Right, and so we won't actually make that decision until the spring.
And of course, that's longer term debt than the short term debt is.
Yes.
Okay. But ultimately, if we kept the same tax rate, we would have more revenue going into general fund and less needed revenue going into debt service.
Yes.
Okay, because I remember, I think last year, net, we increased our total debt by almost 35 million dollars?
Yeah, well, 40.
Yeah, 40, okay.
Yeah, because we went out for 20 in road bond, 10 in COs, and 10 in local roads.
But we retired some too.
Right, so you're right.
So the net, if I remember the net, the net was about 35 million. But I also noticed that our INS rate, even adding 35 million, did not significantly increase.
No.
Okay, and the other thing I wanted to know is, is what was the appraised value? I know we've got, okay, I've got the number, I can calculate that. The appraised value of 269 to 283. Okay, and that includes the two, the revenue, okay. All right, I'm, I'm good. I think I've got the numbers I need. Yeah, and I, and I just wanted to, if we could talk about the budget to actuals and where we are now? Have we got, is this an appropriate time to talk about that?
I knew you would. And you're gonna have to remember for like two hours when we get down to what we're gonna need, okay?
Right, right.
So I went ahead and printed off the budget to actuals from today's earlier meeting.
Oh, okay, I was going off of August 8th, but-
Well, I went off August 14th, which, Nina, when did you run that?
It was at the last, once a year Thursday, whatever date that was.
Okay, well, I just, I wanted to look at, I wanted to look at numbers. I, I figured that the numbers we had August 8th reflected a full 10 months of our fiscal year. So is that a valid assumption?
Relatively, yeah. But I hate to burst bubbles, but I am gonna say that we have budgeted all 90 million in fund balance, which is on the last page of the revenue packet.
Right, and that's why I wanted to have these conversations about-
We can have them now or we can have them after you go through expenditures.
Some of those items are appropriate for using debt.
So estimated fund balance for general fund, we went through it a couple, it's probably been a couple of months now, yeah, back in June. It's current, it has been certified to the tax assessor collector at essentially 90 million dollars. And that has been fully budgeted in expenditures for '24, '25. The current, what I just handed you, budget to actuals, if you think about it, the revenues are sitting at 150 million. The expenditures are sitting at 114 million. But we still have 4.1 remaining pay periods left at approximately 3.9 million per pay period. So we are gonna spend another 14,56,700 in payroll for the rest, for the rest of August and September.
Okay.
And then we have open POs currently of 12,138.
Okay, so that, so that forecasts with those adjustments, because you're not assuming any additional revenue coming in?
Correct, and I can tell you there is 2 million. 1.2 of it was insurance claims.
Of additional revenue?
That's not on the 150, yes.
Gotcha.
But it's only 2.
Hazard insurance?
Roof, I think.
Yeah, it was, okay, hazard stuff, okay. But, so, so ultimately, what we're projecting then, best idea is a little over a 10 million dollar general fund surplus?
Agreed.
Okay, and on the contingency, we still-
4 point-
Yeah, the numbers I looked at, just looking at the budget to actuals, both on contingency, is, is we have, okay, I had us at, we were currently 38 million dollars in surplus of, in revenues in excess of expenditures. But you're taking those two, 20, 26, if you take the 26 million dollars out of that, because we know we're gonna pay the payroll.
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you don't want to.
No, no, I think it's a part, I think that's a pretty good idea.
I'm just saying, you know, if you want to cut this meeting off, we can cut it off real quick.
Not that I'm playing to the, playing to the crowd, but yes, okay.
There's a crowd.
Yeah, but, and then on the capital side, general capital improvements budget, of the 44 million, we have only spent, we've got a 32.6 million dollar-
That is being budgeted to be spent in '25.
Okay, so that rolls over. Okay, so we're-
And of that 12 million in open encumbrances, almost 5 million is rolling over.
Right, and I guess that was what that figure was that was on the capital contingent, or the capital was that 6 million dollars figure? That was expenditures not budgeted?
Yes, that was the-
On budget actuals, yes.
The 6 million dollars on the budget actuals, okay. But that would say that we've got 32.6 million dollars of capital improvements money, 74%, 74%, I mean, that, that would put us at a 74% surplus of revenue to expenditures. Just saying reserves to reserves, because I know that money came from reserves. But reserves to reserves, that's, we've only spent 26%.
And we're, but that one doesn't, I mean, it rolls.
But we've collected that, we've collected that money.
Yes, and it'll roll to 2025 to continue funding those projects.
Well, that puts us at, from my calculations, of the total 242 million dollars for last year's budget, which was capital plus general fund. That puts us 70 point, well, I'll take that back. Let me take, because I didn't adjust for the 26 million. Okay, so let me take 26 million out of that. But that's, uh, we're over 20% in revenue in excess of our expenditures for this year projected.
Not new revenue, it's fund balance continuing to roll.
Right.
Only 10 is gonna be about new, new fund balance.
Okay, but we've, okay, but we've collected that.
In prior years.
Bottom line is, is I'm looking at things and I'm saying, we're, hang on just a second. But I don't have my calculator in front of me. Take 20, take 26 million out of 70.1 million, what do you get?
49, 48.9?
So 48.9 million, 32 million of that is capital. About 10 million of that, okay, but that puts us at a point of where we have revenues. We get 20% more revenue from our current budget than our estimated final expenses, which is, yeah, that's 20%.
Walk me through that again, because-
So 20% of the 242 million dollars. If I add, if I add capital, budgeted capital and budgeted, I'm sorry, budgeted general fund and, and budgeted capital.
But you have to look at actuals and general fund.
I'm looking at the actuals, and the actuals, I mean, how mu, how much of, how much of that 32.6 million that's in capital do we anticipate we're gonna spend?
In one year?
In, no, 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 in this year, by the time we close our books on this year. How much of that additional, how much of that 32.6 million that we have not paid?
Every, it'll all roll to the next year. I mean, I don't know how much.
Okay, so we don't think that there's gonna be much-
Eventually, we, we have budgeted and eventually on capital, we will, as far as I can tell, spend it.
Okay, so on the-
It just won't be in one year.
So breaking it down on the general fund side, we're gonna generate 10 million dollars more-
For next year's capital.
Revenue, revenue that gets added to our fund balance.
Yes.
Okay, and-
And that you can use.
We'll just net out the capital that goes. And the reason I'm asking this is there were some comments that were made from people about saying, oh, no, there, this doesn't, doesn't go into fund balance last year when we talked about this. When we talked about there being a 20 million dollar surplus. And there were comments that were made that, well, no, that's all spent. It just rolls forward into the next year. But in, in the, I wanted to point out, in the case of capital this year, 32.6 million of that's anticipated to roll forward. But we collected all the money for that. But still, on the general fund side, we've got a 10 million dollar, we're projecting, with adding the last two payrolls in, a 10 million dollar surplus over what our general fund expenditures were.
And the proposed budget needs 97 million.
I'm sorry, run that by me again.
The proposed budget needs 97 million. 90 is coming, is in there for fund balance. And then 7 million you're gonna have to set a tax rate for or something.
We'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to that. But I guess the concerns that I have here is, is we're not spending money we say we're gonna be spending on behalf of the citizens of Brazos County on the capital side, and that's no different. But we also are building up this fund balance that's now prior to, okay, let's net the, let's net the capital out of it. Our 149 million dollar fund balance at the beginning of this year is gonna be 159 million on the general fund side, correct?
Well, you have to take out reserve, but yes.
Right, okay, but we start, our starting, our starting fund balance, because we're generating 10 million dollars more in revenue in general fund than we need and that we're gonna spend, is gonna take us from-
36 of that.
149 to 159. Okay, so we take out, we have our fund balance policy of 25%. We take that out of there. So, so bottom line is, is we add, before we make commitments for reserve, for fund balance for next year, we add 10 million dollars to that bottom line that was on, from the budget.
And, and we can negotiate that because it isn't actually in hand yet or spent yet. And so you got, I think, you have to be very careful spending the current year's anticipated fund balance increase.
Yeah.
I know you don't agree with that.
It's not there until it's there. But the trend is, over the last 10 years, we have never spent more. On the general fund side, we have never- On the general fund side, we have never spent more than 90% of our revenue.
But we're budgeting to spend all of our fund balance next year, so it's changing.
If we don't use any debt service.
Correct.
For some of those projects that might be appropriate for debt service.
And we haven't plugged in any road bonds.
Okay, that's why I'm bringing up all these questions.
I know, we're taking a walk in the trail, I get it, that makes sense.
And I'm just, like I say, I'm, I'm, we need to spend the citizens' money on things that benefit the citizens of this county instead of sitting on the money we're sitting on. That's my point.
Commissioner, I'm not sure what you're trying to say, but if you, in your wildest dreams, thought we would have been through, whether it's the medical examiner's office, or whether it's 101 in a year, or all these other projects that we're looking at, you were dreaming. That takes time.
Well, I'm, I'm a pragmatist, Judge, I'm not a dreamer.
Okay, well, then you're not going to spend everything that you know you're building for to get, but, but those, we hadn't even let contracts on some of that stuff, but we know it's coming.
Right, it's, we're estimating, we're estimating, well, our fund balance, we don't have the sheets in front of us, but our fund balance has consistently grown every year, and it's been from general fund. And in conversations when we had about the tax rate last year, a lot of people said, oh, there's not a, there's not a fund, there's not a, uh, uh, a surplus. They said, no, it's always been committed, and I'm, and I'm going like, no, it's not, there, there was a surplus. Last year was, on the capital side, it was, uh, uh, 20 something million, and on the general fund side, it was 13 million. If you look at the final numbers on the budget to actuals last year. So on the general fund side last year, we, we collected 13 million dollars more than we needed. And on the capital side, let's just call it a wash that it goes across, but if, if, you know, anyway, we collected more money than, than we needed, or.
Maybe needed in that year, this year, but.
How's your fund balance go from where it was to 150 million dollars? If there was no surplus, if what you said, and what you said last year that there was no surplus, and I remember those, you can go back to the records and look at it, and you said, oh, no, but we're going to have those for the future because we're going to need those for payroll. Well, we're not going to go back and, and fund.
No, we're not needing that, that's not.
Well, Judge, I'll go back to you on the record, and what I'm saying is, is when we come to the point, the point I'm trying to arrive at is, is when we're establishing an appropriate and fair tax rate for people, we need to keep in mind that we have, for the last 10 years, collected at least 10% or more than we have needed, and that's fact.
Commissioner, we, we always run, we always have more money than we budget for because we, we budget for full employment, and we do not have every position filled every year.
Commissioner, I understand all those things. If there's anybody that understands those numbers here better than me, I, I dispute that, so you don't have to explain that to me, okay? What I'm saying is, is we're taking, we are consistently taking more money out of people's pockets than we need or we spend, period.
So are you saying we shouldn't budget for what we expect our expenses to be?
Not when you have 150 million dollar fund balance.
Well, we're, we are going to be using fund balance certainly this year to balance, I think that's, that'll become.
Well, I will be happy with that, because that will mean that we're not sitting on too much money, losing purchasing power that's citizens' money. I will be happy about that, if we write a check for these things as opposed to using debt service. There are also some of those expenditures that we're going to be making and looking at and evaluating on the, on the capital side, that it's appropriate for us to use debt service.
But if we got fund balance, you're saying we should use fund balance, and now you're saying we should use debt.
I would prefer, I would prefer, I would prefer that to sitting on the money.
Well, I mean.
But the problem is, is if you, if, no, I'm not, no, I'm not, what I'm saying is, is, what, what's happened to the purchasing power of that money that we've been sitting on?
And then spend the borrowing money and leave the fund balance over there, yes, you are.
What's happened, no, I'm not, what's happened to the purchasing power of that money we've been sitting on for the last five years?
You know, we're sitting on, I mean, you understand that it takes longer than just a year to get the kind of contract we're talking about, whether it's the medical examiner or whether it's this 101, it's not like you flip that over and you've got it started and got it contracted, it doesn't happen that way. So that money sits until you get something done.
You're not telling me something, I'm not, you, you, okay. So the question is, is do we lose purchasing power on the money that we're sitting on until we can write a check for it? Or does it make sense for us to use?
So do you know a easier way to get it spent?
Yes, we should have used debt service back when our interest, when our debt service rate was eight cents per 100.
If we'd have had debt service, we'd have been borrowing money to do it?
No, we're not, yeah, we could have, but, but look at what your interest rate window was, when you missed all those opportunities, when you were sitting on money.
We didn't have money back when it was a bunch cheaper.
Well, we'll go back to the numbers.
We have ARPA funds now, which has made us, given us the ability to do some things that we'd have never done before, because we didn't have. You know?
Okay.
Let's move on, I'm, it's, it's, I don't want to be here, uh.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, Judge, I will expect, I will respectfully disagree with you because I think when it comes to spending time to talk about how to treat taxpayers and property owners in Brazos County fairly, it's worth taking the time.
The tax rate has dropped nine cents over the last couple of years.
The taxes have gone up, the tax rate dropping is irrelevant. The tax, the amount of tax paid on those properties has gone up or down, sir?
If their valuations went up a bunch, I.
I rest my case, I rest my case.
And I have nothing to do with that, we dropped the tax rate.
So we've provided the average homes with homestead exemption calculations, the houses is what we call them, for both the 20, 2024 possible rates, as well as, um, home, with homestead for the last four, excuse me, yes, this year and the previous three. And then the last page is the fund balance. And the only thing I would point out on this is it changed a little bit because of this ARPA revenue replacement funds, we reallocated it to be spent on payroll, and, um, so I changed the fund balance because it's not restricted anymore. Now it's part of just regular fund balance, and I decreased it by 500,000 for the Wixson Creek special utility district project. And then there's still the 36,000 million in, um, reserves. Nina.
May we recess for 10 minutes while I get set up for expenditures?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, we're going to recess.
Y'all didn't hear, it's this 10 minute recess.
Yep.
All right, we're going to come back in and turn it over to you, Nina.
Okay, at this point, we're going to start talking about expenditures. The first sheet you're going to review is the expenditures without capital projects. We kind of like to break it up to show what is a everyday departmental needs versus the one-time-only capital projects. So the first off, without capital projects, as Katie mentioned before, the revenues match what she presented, it's just a different formatting. And here you see the minus 3 million at the top for the taxes to adjust. Right now, at the expenditure level, it looks like we're at 22 million deficit, and I'm about to explain where that number is coming from. Another expenditure budget, this is increased expenditures at a total of 19 million dollars, which includes the 4.5% cost of living for majority of the county employees across the board. Along with that is benefit increase due to the cost of living at 816,000. We have one day accrual based on this pay, um, this next year payroll, which totals out to be 29,000, and this means that one day we'll fall back to the previous year. Position, position reclassifications, deletions, and salary adjustments come to 1.2 million, and I'll go through each one here shortly, that way you can understand where that number comes from. Couple of weeks ago, we had community support come and talk about their increases, which brought it up to 702,000 dollars. The transfer to the grant fund is 1.1 million, which, this includes the juvenile grants that we receive, which we have to support some of the salary and benefits, as well as the Texas Indigent Defense. This next year, we have to cover 20% because it decreases from 100% grant to 80/20, so part of that's 20%. Departmental increases, this means anything needed between daily operations, paper goods, contract services, computer equipment, 468,000. And of course, the new one-time-only purchases in non-capitalized projects, one-time-only, it's 11 million, and we'll, I'll break this down for you. Included in this budget are new positions, it's coming up to be 3 million dollars. Within this budget, we have a robing bailiff that was created this fiscal year. Along with the, creating it for '25, we're going to bump up two steps to cover for some of the certifications that they're going to require this position, so it's a total of 3,000 dollars. A Clark I will be created under collections, and this is to help, I don't know what happened. This is to help with some of the restitution, and there is actually, like, I brought my notes, I want to read some of the statutes, that way if there's any questions, the statutes can be referred to. Under local government code 508.322, it's a releasey restitution fund. Once the payment is made by the restitution fund, it's up to the, to the office to search for these people where this money belongs to. And so the collections has been fortunate to take on this duty, but along with this duty, they're going to have to have a position to help with it. And so they're finding all these, uh, these claimants. So they have to research addresses for the past.